So because we're doing this as a town hall, at any point if you have a question or you want to chime in, or you have something to add, or an experience about, you know, one of the programs we're talking about, you're welcome to, you know, throw your hand up, or just, hey, whatever you need to do, you know, just it's the our setting is was designed to be interactive. So if you have something that you want to add, feel free. And if you know, if it's something that you need to, if I'm speaking or Joe's speaking, you need to ask the opposite, or the mayor as well, you know, if you want to ask any of us questions, feel free to just jump in and do that. Because again, this is very informal town hall, but that was the idea, is for it to feel like a space where you can get any questions you may have answered, and assuming we have the answer. If not, we will, Joe will find the answer for you. Did you like that? All right. So the first programs I'm going to talk about are some of the CARES Act programs. And I think we all know what the CARES Act is. You know, it was passed in March. It's the Coronavirus Aid or Lead Economic Security Act. There are some main programs of that that are really designed for small business to alleviate some of the economic pain caused by the COVID-19. One piece of that is the Paycheck Protection Program. So that's the forgivable loan program, which I will talk about a little more in depth down through the line. It pays things like payroll expenses, rent, mortgage utilities. Then there's also the disaster loans, which was the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, or IDOL. And the Paycheck Protection Program one, I'm going to call that P3, because these, it's a mouthful to say these loan programs. So Paycheck Protection Program is going to be P3 from here on out, and the Economic Injury Disaster Loan will be IDOL. And so that becomes the IDOL loan comes with a $10,000 grant that is available within three days of an approved application. And that is, you know, that that comes to you within the first three days. And that's just a $10,000 grant portion of the loan. And then there's also some debt relief with the existing SDA loans that they are offering. I'm not sure if that would apply to anyone in here, but if you have specific questions about that, we can, we can talk about that as well. So the first one we're really going to go in depth on is the Paycheck Protection Program. So P3 was very evolving. It's, it has evolved a lot. It has closed and reopened, and it has changed a lot. So some big changes came in June. It changed some of the program. It's, you know, gosh, the term of the loan is now five years instead of two years. The amounts, they re, the previously it was 75% had to be spent on payroll. Now it's only 60% has to be spent on payroll. So all of those changes came down in June. So it looks a little bit differently. And it closed at the end of June, but they still had $130 billion probably left at the end of that, whenever it closed. So they reopened it, even though it closed June 30th. On July 6th, last Monday, they opened it back up and said, hey, we're going to go ahead and extend the deadline on applications for the P3 loan. So they extended that until August 8. You now have, I guess, that's a Saturday, which feels like a weird day to me, but you have until August 8th, which is a Saturday, to get your, I'm sure it's midnight that night, to get your loan application in. So there's a couple of good reasons that you might want to apply for this one. It is, there's over $100 billion left, so why not have a piece of that? Again, that deadline has been extended, and this is a 100% forgivable loan if you spend it within the guidelines. And these forgiveness terms have been relaxed. As, as we get further and further into this pandemic, they have relaxed the forgiveness terms. It's getting better and better and easier. They've even come up with an easy form. So if you, you didn't reduce your payroll by more than 25% or you're self-employed or have no employees, there's some really great stipulations where you just do like a two-page easy forgiveness form, and you're done, and your loan is forgiven. So they're, they've gotten pretty laid back with those terms. So that makes it very easy for a business to get this loan forgiven. So if, you know, when I say loan forgiven, that essentially is a grant. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's a grant. Some other great things about this is even if something comes up, and you do have to do this as a loan, it's a 1% interest. So that's, those are terms that you don't normally get on a loan. So it's only 1% interest. And folks get concerned, for easiness of math, I'm going to say, if I'm a small business, and I take out $100,000 in this loan, that's what I apply for, that's what I get. And I anticipate that I'm going to spend 60% or $60,000 on my payroll. If something comes up, and I get to the end of that, you know, that 24-week period, and I have not spent $60,000 on payroll, I only spent $58,000. I am not responsible for that $58,000 as a loan. The only portion of that that would be considered a loan will be the 2% that I didn't, that $2,000 there that I didn't use as my payroll expenses. And then if the other 40% is still, you know, under covered costs such as rent, utilities, that sort of thing, that is still forgivable as well. So there is, you know, that was a little vague at first, but that has been clarified, that, you know, now that we are into this, and we see how that's working, you, even if something comes up, and you don't spend the anticipated amount on payroll, you are not responsible for that as a loan. That portion is still forgivable, and the portion that you're responsible for as a loan is, you know, five-year term, 1% interest rate, and it's only the percentage that you didn't use on payroll. So that, that's very encouraging. And it's not as, it doesn't seem as daunting to take out a loan in that case. I made myself notes. I'm trying to make sure I covered all the important things. Let's see. So how do you apply? So this one is through an SDA lender. So most of you could just go to your local bank, or talk to them about being SDA lender. If you want to have a general idea of what that looks like, you can go on the website and print out, you can print the application process and get a general idea of what that's going to be, and get prepared for that, and then, you know, go to your, your lender, and then apply through them. But you do, you can print this online, and go ahead and have the application, but it can't be submitted online. It has to be submitted to your local lender. All right. So if you do decide, does anyone in here have a PPP loan that they want to share, that they've already received it? All right. A couple of things about to consider whenever you're spending that. You know, some of our account vendors who are, we trust dearly, have let us know that a great idea is to separate your bank account. You want to put that in a separate bank account, because then it's so easy to track how you spend it. It's very easy, because again, you do have to prove how you spent this money for it to be forgivable. To make it a forgivable loan, you will have to, I mean, they don't just say, oh, sure, you spent it correctly. We'll, we'll just forgive all that for you. That's, it's not quite how it works. So you have to, you do have to prove that you have spent this. There's going to have to be a level of accountability within your records. And again, if these are things, if you have a great account, these are things you probably don't have to worry so much about, because this great account is going to do this for you. But so you create a physical and virtual folder to compile all of your documentation on how each thing was spent, each piece of this was spent. Because again, you're going to have to prove this. So approved uses payroll cost, as we talked to, about at least 60% of that, and rent, utilities, interest on your mortgage obligations, or interest on other debt obligations during the, during or before the covered period. So a couple of things about how this is calculated. So the amount of payroll protection program loan that you can get is going to be, how you figure that out is you take your average payroll over a certain period. And they're pretty flexible. There are certain periods on there, they'll let you calculate this by, because that, they, you know, a lot of our businesses, especially here, are seasonal. And we know that, you know, your payroll, say, if you are in the rafting industry, your payroll from December to March is not what it is in the summertime, in the time right now. So they're, they're very understanding of that. And so they give you a couple of different options of the times you can choose to calculate this. And you just take your average payroll, and you multiply by 2.5. So that, that's how they come up with that number. And that's, so each business will have a different eligible amount. There's no set, you know, each, you know, this business has five employees, so they are going to be eligible for this amount. That's not how it works. It's based individually on your payroll, your previous payroll. Oh, let's see. So back to the forgiveness piece. Again, you're going to have to prove that. It's, you're going to have to prove how you spent it to be forgiven. It's a pretty easy process. I mentioned previously that there is an easy form that is very easy. But even the long form for the forgiveness is only a four-page document. It's very, very, and it's already online. If someone, if you're not to the point, if you have a loan, and you're not to the point where you are ready to apply for forgiveness, you can go ahead and print that out and have it there, so you kind of know what you're looking for, what they're going to be needing from you. And again, the easy form is if you're self-employed or no employees, or if you didn't reduce your wages more than 25%. So it's, it's pretty simple for the easy form, and even the long form is pretty simple as well. There are even some exceptions. I've had some folks who have been very nervous about applying for this, who said, well, what if I can't get my employees to come back to work? I know this, you know, this program is designed to keep folks on the payroll. What if I can't get, you know, folks to come back to work? So there are some exceptions that, you know, they have, again, the forgiveness has become very, it has relaxed a lot since this initially was instated. So some of those names, some of the exceptions they are willing to make for forgiveness are rejection of a good faith offer to return. So if you have, you know, documentation that you offered for employees to come back to work, and they wouldn't come back to work, and you couldn't get anyone else hired in that position, because this isn't tied to specific people, it's tied to your payroll amount. So, you know, if this person doesn't want to come back to work, but you can hire someone else in that position, that's perfectly acceptable. But the forgiveness does allow for you not being able to get folks back to work. There, I, I think that everyone kind of understands that this is, it's a weird time to live in, and not everyone's wanting to come back to work. And, and folks can't seem to get folks back to work. So that, that, they do have that exception in there. There are some other ones. So if you are unable to rehire or rehiring employee that would have the same qualifications as the previous one. Now, I will say, during our last one, we had someone mention, was that in Fayette County? I think someone mentioned that they had hired, because it was tied to payroll and not individual people, they rehired an employee, they had employees who didn't want to come back to work. So they rehired some folks who had construction skills, and used them to do some remodeling. They had payroll, and they had people at work. But they used those folks, they put them on the payroll, and had them do remodeling, instead of whatever their business is. Did I, did that come from the last one?
I would say, yeah.
But anyhow, so folks have gotten creative, and, you know, because it's tied to payroll. It's not tied to an individual person doing an individual job.
Tied to the dollar amount that's in that payroll number, that's what they're going to look at.
Yeah. So, so there are some creative ways to use that during this time, and make the best of the time. If you can't open your business as normal, you can still be paying folks to, you know, even help you upgrade your business, that whenever, whatever future holds, maybe you're more equipped to, you know, do better business. Uh, let's see. And another exception they have are that if you are unable to return to the same level of business activity due to government requirements, and this is an exception for allowing forgiveness. So if something happens, and you do take this loan out, but it turns out because of the restrictions, the COVID restrictions, you're not able to return to your normal level of business, they will, you, that is something that will create an exemption for you, and still allow your loan to be forgiven. So that's really encouraging as well, because with that, you know, it is kind of, it's, it's a little scary, because you don't know what the future holds. And this way, there are several provisions already in there that will allow you to have a loan forgiven. So I'm going to move on and talk about the Economic Injury Disaster Loans, unless anyone has any specific points or questions about that.
Again, with all these applicant, you know, if you're still interested in doing the P3 application, or the EIDO, which he's about to talk about, the high, or our office, our office can assist folks with processing that. It's a relatively simple process, but we are available to help with that.
I have a question.
Okay.
If you currently have the program, and you want to move from the eight weeks that we initially were allotted, to the 24 weeks, how do you make that transition? And can you make that transition?
You absolutely can, but that has to be done through your local lender. So whoever you got your loan through locally, whatever SDA-approved lender that you used, you'll have to go to your banker there, speak with them about that. So the original terms of that loan, I assume you, you were approved before June 5th, then? So your terms were a two-year term, if something would happen, and you do have to pay it back, and eight weeks instead of 24 weeks. And then that was the 75% versus the 60%. Now, my understanding is that it automatically shifts from the 75 to 60%, but the other two, you have to go, the other two changes that they made on June 5th, you have to go through your lender and, and speak with them. And it's, as long as you both agree to change it from the eight weeks to the 24 weeks, and as long as you both agree to change it from the two-year to five-year term. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So you should be able to do that through your lender.
Can you also increase the amount if you can increase it to 24 weeks?
You cannot. Unfortunately, that is something that they, the only way to do that would be if you spent all of it now, got it forgiven, and applied again, and got a second one. There's no rules against getting a second one after you've gotten that first one forgiven. But unfortunately, even with that change, that, you know, it's been probably a week since I looked that up. But unless they've made some provision in the last week, they had that set, that you could not, because that was a common problem. A lot of folks were interested in doing that, and there was no provision to do that, unfortunately.
Let's stay tuned.
Yeah. It's, I'm going to use this as my favorite analogy. I heard this analogy early on, that it's like taking, taking off on a flight to go somewhere, and building the airplane as you're flying. Like, that's literally what this entire, I mean, there's no other way to do it. This is the only option. But it's my favorite analogy. Like, it really is, you know, it's, hey, we created this program, now we have to build it as we are executing it. I mean, that's really the only option here. So everything is constantly changing. And so, I mean, you know, there, I do my best to convey the most recent information, but it's, there's a lot of information, and it's, changes every single day. Like, you know, you go have a fun weekend with your kids, and then you come back on Monday morning, and you're like, oh, okay, well, everything I knew on Friday is now different. Perfect! And so, I mean, you just have to relearn constantly. It's, it's a little overwhelming at times. All right. Anything else about P3? All right. So we will talk about IDOL, which is the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. And this is the one that has the loan advance. So with this is, this is, again, for small business owners, this, these are loans up to $2 million. I'm not sure that any of us qualify for a loan quite that big, but it does come with a loan up to $10,000, or an advance up to $10,000, which is, you know, like a little grant at the beginning, which is a little deceiving. So I say, you know, it's up to $10,000, depending on your number of employees. So how that works is if you apply for this, and then you are approved, you will get your advance within the first three days of applying. They send you that, or approval, I'm sorry. So it may not actually be $10,000. If you only have one employee, you're only going to get $1,000 in an advance. The, this advance is based on number of employees up to $10,000. So if you have 10 employees, you'll get $10,000. If you have 22 employees, you'll get $10,000. If you have six employees, you'll get $6,000. So it's, 1,000 per employee is what that advance is, and it's, again, up to 10,000. So, you know, it's a little deceiving, because, you know, when, I, I've had several folks call me, they're like, now, I want that one that gives me $10,000. And I'm like, well, you only have one employee, so you're only getting an advance of 1,000. So it is a little deceiving the way it's worded, but that is something to note on that one. So are there any nonprofits in here? All right. So now, both of these, the P3 and the IDOL, you are eligible for. The terms for the IDOL are just a little bit different for nonprofit than they are for-profit business. So for nonprofits, profits, it's going to be 2.75%, and then for for-profit, it'll be 3.75. So that's just something to note. It's a little bit different there. And now, these are SDA loans that you apply for online. You go through the application process on their website, and it's all done and submitted online. There is a little tricky section on there, and to my knowledge, that hasn't changed. The, the loss section, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. So this, and we've had, we've had folks talk about this at previous meetings as well. So the way this is designed, this is a disaster relief loan. So generally, these loans, when they are disaster relief loans, are, I mean, this is, this is very, you know, we're, everything is uncharted territory in this entire pandemic. So they rolled this out as a disaster relief loan, which is what it is, except there are sections of it that are very tricky. Has anyone here that wants to share, applied for this and gotten it?
So in the past, an SBA did disaster loans. They never accounted for things like a pandemic. It was floods, other types of natural disasters.
Right.
So they did not appear for application.
And so it appears that you have to submit proof of physical damage to your business in this particular section, where you have to prove, we're going to say economic loss. It's not worded like that. But what they're wanting from you is proof, your proof of economic loss. So that's, you know, the proof that your business had suffered economically. But the way it's worded, it suggests that it wants proof of physical damage to your business, and it's very tricky. Folks have kind of skipped over that section, because there wasn't physical damage to their business. But then, there's not anywhere to submit the economic damage portion. And so they were denied the loan because they didn't submit that. So if you do decide to submit this, and you're welcome to call me, my, I put cards back there if you get to that point. So it's just something to note, that if you're submitting this, or you have folks that you're talking to or submitting this, just make sure that you are aware, when they're referencing, you know, your damage to your business, they're wanting economic loss. They're wanting the damage, that economic damage that this pandemic has done to your business. So that's a little tricky.
So you're rejecting out revenue that you're losing to make those calculations.
Right, exactly. So, but it, the way it's worded, it makes you think that they want a picture of the roof of your building being missing or something, and that's not at all what you're doing there. So that is a little bit tricky, and it is something to note on that one. Um, let's see. Sorry, I wanted to make sure I covered all the notes. So there are a couple of things that I wanted to just kind of compare the two loans. These both are for small businesses or nonprofits. Your, the IDOL loan is, you know, I mentioned that the P3 loan is very calculated in the amount you will be eligible for. It's a very specific calculation tailored to each of your businesses. IDOL is just, it's a normal one that is, you know, on your, based on your credit score, your revenue, your expenses. So it's, it's a very average business loan in that sense. It is up to 2 million. And the P3, I don't know if I mentioned this earlier, is up to 10 million. Let's see. So, and the IDOL loan term is 30 years, and it does have the advance, which we talked about the advance. I mean, they consider that a forgivable portion, which is based on number of employees. And with the P3 loan, there, there's no collateral required with that at all. And with IDOL, there's no collateral, as long as your loan is under $200,000. Now, after $200,000, there will be, but under $200,000, you're good on that.
One of the things I've encountered with the EIDL is that a lot of folks will apply for a specific amount, and they will get that advance piece, $1,000 per employee, while, while they're waiting for the rest of their loan to be processed. But then they decide, well, maybe I really don't need that. I don't want to go into debt for it. Of course, they can keep the amount that's under $10,000 that's advanced, but they just have to go in and let SBA know in the system that they're not going to take the rest of the loan, and nothing else happens. So we're accounting a lot of that.
So I have some questions. So the $10,000, or whatever you get, up to the number of employees, that's a grant. You don't pay that much?
It's forgivable, yes. Absolutely. It's, yes.
Okay. And so...
They call it an advance, but yes, it's a grant.
So, so this could be the loan that truly could be for lost revenue?
That's correct. It could be, it could be like a lost revenue or working capital loan.
Do you have to prove that? How does that work? I mean, you just tell them you're, you've lost X amount of dollars?
Well, you demonstrate with your financial statements, et cetera. It's just what you're accustomed to.
Is that what you put through with the loan?
Yes.
Okay. So like last year...
It's easier to prove.
Right. Last year compared to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like if we had fairs and festivals last year, and the year before, we can reject what we lost this year, because we haven't had fairs and festivals. So that would be something your lost revenue, I could say, that adds up.
Of your income statement.
And that's the piece that you, you know, you prove in the, the loss section, which the one I was referencing, that sounds like physical loss, but it's, you know, it means economic loss. So you just justify that there.
So by what you said, you know, a lot of the challenges are, you know, of course, who knows what the regulatory auditing piece of this whole thing will watch out to be, if it ever exists at all. But just as example with the PPE, and the CARES Act stuff that the governor's doing now, those monies can be used for, I mean, so if you read through the new stuff the governor put out, it's kind of, you know, you've got to prove, but it also says in there, you, you know, it's got to be an expense that you've never been reimbursed for. So you can't duplicate, okay? But on this piece, it seems to me, if I had a business, that I had, you know, however many employees, I would apply for this for some amount, and then, you know, and then come back and say, no, I don't want it, because you're going to get, you know, you're going to get the, the forgiving piece regardless. I mean...
You mean the two...
You apply for EIDL, again, on the basis of, I mean, the P3 keeps employees working. So the EIDL is for the working capital and the projected loss piece going forward. Nobody's, I mean, the P3 does not do that for you. So, you know, there's a lot of folks that have, you know, even though you don't even ask for a specific amount, what they started doing is just giving you a dollar amount, which is somewhere around $130,000 is what's happened with that. But, yeah, that, but the EIDL, you know, if you're, if you're struggling with the loss, like a, like a raft company, for example, that's losing, that's losing revenue over the months from April through October, that's what they use that for. So they've got their financial statements, they know what they did last year, they're projecting out their loss. That's what EIDL is for. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I guess, yeah. But again, it's a loan, so you're borrowing money to run your operation. And I'm just trying to, yeah.
And what's the payback period on that, did you say?
30 years.
Is there, is there an interest rate?
Zero. Three, zero.
2.75.
2.75 for nonprofit, and for-profit is 3.75.
And what's the deadline to apply for that?
There isn't one until the money runs out.
See, I was totally confused when that first came out.
Well, they shut it down for a while. They ran out of money or something.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then they opened it only to agricultural businesses. And then they reopened it back in June, I don't know, second week of June, maybe, they reopened this one again. So yeah, so like, both have been closed down and reopened. Currently, we are functioning, you know, with IDOL applications that are running till the money runs out. There's no deadline, just till the money runs out. P3 is till August 8th, and...
And that application process is not through your bank, it's all online?
Yeah, the IDOL is all online.
So, so the IDOL, the $10,000 is, as you said, forgivable. And that application, because I did it, it was like one page, and it asked you like three questions or something, and that was it. They don't ask you for financial statements or anything.
No.
But now they're, I have to go in and tell them I don't want any, any more money, as you said. But my second question is, when you say nonprofit, is 501(c)(4) eligible for the IDOL? If you're a 501(c)(4) nonprofit?
So the last time I checked on that, it was not.
It's not, okay.
But that doesn't mean it's true.
Right. I mean, I have checked too, and I, and it doesn't list it, but I just wondered.
Because the C6 wasn't originally, and then they changed that too. But I don't, I have not seen any guidance on the four.
Okay.
So how do you cut? Wait, I'm still. So the amount that you're asking for on the loan can be based on what you've lost. So we didn't open until June 1st. I own a campground here. We lost out on Memorial Weekend, which was a big ton of change for us.
Oh, yeah.
That we used to better the campground. So I would look at that amount that I lost, and that's what I would apply for? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
So, so I don't think they're still asking for a dollar amount on the IDOL, right?
Yeah.
So, so they're not asking for that a dollar amount. They're going to give you an amount, but you want to be able to tell them that you, you experienced a loss in your operations.
Oh, so it's a set loan?
Yes. Yeah. It's the, it's at their discretion.
There you go.
Well, how do they sell this thing?
Well, yeah.
It's kind of like Oprah, you ever watched Oprah? You get money, you get money, you get money. I'm pretty sure that's how that works.
Yeah, it's a much less transparent process than P3 is.
So that's a government, it comes from the government, it's not...
SBA.
SBA, Small Business Administration. It's a direct disaster loan.
Sorry, I'm just, because that's not the like what I thought it was.
And, well, and it's so confusing. I mean, it's just, there's, it's really hard to get all of this information, and glean the most recent information from that, and all the changes, and just any of it. I mean, it's, it's a lot. It's a whole lot.
But now, can't you just go in and apply for, do the simple page application, and say, I have five employees, and take your $5,000, and, and then if you don't want any more, you dump? Is that right?
One, one thing I will say, though, to be very bad news, but on Saturday, I was just reading the press release from the SBA, they closed the advance portion. Oh, I love them. They ran out of the $20 billion.
They ran out of the $20 billion of the, of the funds that were allocated.
But you can still...
You can still, you can still apply for the loan, but you just, you can't get the advance portion upfront now.
What are the restrictions around what that money can be used for? Can it be used for like capital improvements, or did I read a piece that said nothing that's a fixed asset can be attained with that money?
That's on the P3.
No, that's on that asset, on the idle loan, I think.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's, I don't know if that's on idle as well or not.
So technically, you're not supposed to, but I don't know that they're going to audit those, I believe, so...
Well, it's really hard if you're a business and you have, like, a hot water heater go out, and you don't have any revenue to fall back on, and now you can't get that because that's your revenue source. What are you supposed to do? I mean, it's kind of like a catch-22.
No, I do believe the P3 would be eligible for that, like the 40% portion of the P3. I mean, if you had the P3 loan, that...
It can't be a fixed asset.
What is the part, is, there's a, there's a piece of that one that's...
It can be like rent and utilities, and it could be interest on other things that you can't pay. If it was an idle, you can't pay any other payments? Like, if you owe an outstanding balance, you can't pay it?
It just could be the interest.
Yeah, it could, the part that doesn't get forgiven.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah. So you can, you can do that if you need to, but you have to pay that back as a loan.
That's about a 1% interest rate that amortizes over time. So, yes, you can, you're just going to pay interest on it.
Okay.
But where can you get a 1% loan?
Right.
Right. And, and I think that they extended it over 70 years to, so that's, that makes it...
So it pays 1% loan.
Makes it even more generous.
Yeah, if you do end up having to pay that back, payments are deferred for 20 years? Is it, I was going to say...
Six months to a year?
Well, there are different pieces. Early on, it was six months, and then it was 10 months, and then it's, maybe it's, I can't remember how that works. If they did at one point, say 10, up to 12 months, so it's kind, it's going to be somewhere between six and 12 months, depending on what the most recent plan is. But it, it should be, I mean, it'll be at least six months down there.
Do you think that one will be forgiven at some point if we don't get to return to normal revenue sources?
I think so. I think that if, if the situation that you're talking about occurs, which could be likely, I think we'll probably see another account of, of these types of loans.
Right.
All right, any more loan questions or comments or feedback?
So, I just want to be clear, so when I go out here and try to help the local business community, the economic injury disaster loan, you don't give them an amount, you just apply, and they pick what they give you. And, and is that based on when you fill out the application, your, I mean, I mean, I don't understand that. I mean, that just is, is blowing me that somebody sent somewhere, thrown a dart, and that's what you're going to get. I mean, I mean, is it based on your number of employees, or is it based on what you say your economic loss is?
Basically, it on what you say your economic loss is. But again, there's no, they're not relating back what you tell them their loss is oftentimes to what they give you. Unfortunately, it's a little bit arbitrary.
Hypothetically, it's based on what you say your economic loss is. All right, there are a few other provisions in the CARES Act. I'm not going to go into depth on any of these. These are all things that are more areas that your accountant can help you through if, for some reason, you don't have an accountant and you want more information. I'm happy to email you that afterwards. I also gave everybody a little sign-in sheet. If you just kind of want to put your information down, you can, there's some options for things that you can check, but if you want specific information, if there's something that we've talked about today, and you want that specific resource, or, you know, maybe that specific website or something, if you just, anything follow-up that you want me to send you, just go ahead and jot that down, and we will take care of getting that information out to you as well. All right, so there are some tax provisions for businesses and individual taxpayer and unemployment options out there in this CARES Act. So some of the small business options are, they have an employee retention tax credit, the employer payroll tax delay, the modification for operating losses, and the modification for limit on the business interest. Some of the personal taxpayers, for individual taxpayers are, they have different recovery rebates, pandemic unemployment assistance, which we all know about that, the federal assistance program with that, increased unemployment benefits, and the paid leave provisions. So there are some other things, you know, to be aware of as employers, the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act, the payroll tax at rural, and the employee retention payroll tax credit. There are also some things that are not CARES Act related that are available to small businesses. Both of the next two things I'm going to talk about are grants, so complete free money for small businesses. The first one is through LISC. This is a social enterprise organization that is, it's local initiative support corporation, and they were established to help build communities. They have a focus on rural areas, especially minority-owned businesses, like women-owned businesses, veteran-owned or owned by minorities. They have a grant program, they've done four rounds of it, the last round closed probably mid to end of June, maybe third week of June, somewhere in there. And they are getting ready to open their next round on July 27th. So you just go to their website, and you can even get emailed whenever they are, there's a spot on their website to get email, that you can get emailed for whenever they're going to open. Did you have something you wanted?
No.
I like your support. You were very nice. I like it. So anyway, with this one, the, it's going to open again on July 27th. Their website is lisc.org, and you just go to, like, they have a COVID tab up top, you just click COVID-19, and then you go to, I think, Small Business Assistance, and then they have a little tab that says Small Business Relief Grants. And I have that direct link if you got, if anybody wants me to just send directly to you, but like I said, if you just go to lisc.org, it's pretty easy to find on their website. They've partnered with Truist, I think it's, they're giving out $5 million in grants, I believe. Their grant sizes are $5,000, $7,500, $10,000, and up to $20,000 grants. They, they do it in rounds, like I said. So here's something, if you, it's a relatively easy application process for the grant. If you apply for this one coming up on July 27th, and you don't get the grant, you will have to apply for the next one. You do have to keep on applying each time that they open up a grant cycle. How this works is usually it's open for a week, and you can apply for a week, they close it, they don't take applications again until they announce it, and then they'll take them for a week. They will email you and let you know if you have been approved, and then they will get a little more information from you after you get to that point, to the email point.
So if you can monitor that site, because once these become available, they go fast?
Yes. So definitely get them in. So like I said, it opens on July 27th, so if you want to mark that down. I don't know if it opens, you know, after midnight, or if, I'm not sure, it doesn't have a time which it opens, but I would get my info in there just as quickly as I possibly could, as soon as that gets open.
Do you have a sample of like, can we print out a sample of what they're asking for?
It, it's very simple. I applied the last round, I did not get anything, but I will reapply.
Yes.
It's very simple, it's just like a, you scroll down and answer the questions, but they don't have to put all the...
Do you have to use the money for information?
It is to, just to, same as the governor's grant program, just to recoup losses. It's, it's pretty simple. Now, they will, like I said, you know, if you do make it to, you know, they will email you and let you know if your grant was approved, and then they will get more info from you. But it's just the first series of questions is a very, very simple, just little questionnaire, and it is not available until it is available. Like, there's no, I mean, I guess maybe you could print that out, like, next time it opens, but...
Well, that's, they, they actually email you and say, we're preparing to open, that's, I just...
Yeah.
My information in there, and said that I wanted to be notified, and it would, they kept updating me that they, you know, were going to open up at a certain time, and I went in there and did it just as soon as I got the email that said they were open, filled out the information, and then I got a follow-up email that said, we received your application, you're in a pool with other folks, and we'll let you know more information. So I, I get emails from them frequently now, that, that tell me that they're going to open up another section, please reapply.
And you can register to have your email added, just from their website. Like I said, you go to the lisc.org, and COVID-19, Small Business Assistance, and then Small Business Grants. And if you go through all that, like, there's a little, you scroll down to the bottom, it says, you know, notify me when the next round is open, register here, and you click there, and you put your name, organization, business name probably, and email in, and then they will send you the, you know, the emails that you was talking about. And so you can do that now, you can go ahead and get on an email list now.
Yeah.
So, but again, that's just, you know, just a grant, it's a, a small, you know, just a small business grant design for, you know, like I said, they really like to focus on, you know, rural areas, they like to focus on minority-owned businesses, so it's, it's just a grant.
They ask if you're a one-man-old business, or if you're a minority, but they, they ask questions like that.
Any other questions about the LISC? All right, the next one is the Governor's Grant Program, which this one has, was just technically opened up, I guess, yesterday after his press conference. So this is just a one-time grant to help recoup losses. It's going to be in the amount of $5,000, no matter how big or small your business is, with the exception of businesses over 35 employees are not eligible. And so far, the employee, small business definition, it has to be 1 to 35 employees. So the first step for that one, though, is that you have to become a vendor with the state of West Virginia. Now, this is normally a fee-based process, it is, the fee has been waived. So to do this, you go to the OASIS website, it's wboasis.gov, and you just sign up to become a vendor with the state. So once you do that, it's a two to five day process, and then you go onto the website for that, and whenever the, it's wv, grants.wv.gov, is that the right website?
Yeah, grants.wv.gov.
Okay. So anyway, so you go to that website, and you sign up for the grant, you have to be a vendor first, because you have to have that vendor number prior to the, prior to signing up.
So normally, there's a $35 fee that will be waived.
And, and now, when you do the application, I will note that they are recommending that, and I don't see any reason, they're going to give out 32,000, 32,500, $32,000 grants. So each grant will be in the amount of $5,000, and they're going to give out a total of 32,000 of those. So I don't see any, and it'll be first come, first served. So there, and there's no reason, this is just to recoup economic losses, there's no stipulation on where you need to spend it, there's probably not going to be any checks and balances auditing as to where it's spent, so this is just a great opportunity for small businesses in West Virginia to go ahead and take advantage of that. But I will say, they do recommend that you use Google Chrome. I'm not sure, they said that some of the platforms are not handling that grant application process well, so that is a recommendation, make sure you do, you're using Google Chrome to do that application on there.
So the OASIS site has already had some issues with so many people going on and trying to get this vendor number, so don't give up on it, just keep going back. I think they're working through a lot of those problems right now, but that's one of the initial challenges that they face.
And I will say that when you do that, you have to call from your business phone line or whatever number that your business is associated with, because they will not give you, then you have to get a vendor password to be able to log onto the site, and if you're not on that number, they will not give it to you.
So you've already got your vendor number?
Yes.
So you, so if you were to take advantage of this, you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah.
So you can just go home and apply?
Now?
Yeah, you can, the grant is open. It was supposed to open, I, I've not been on the site to double-check, but it was supposed to open yesterday after the governor's press conference, immediately afterwards. That grant site was supposed to open, and you should be able to apply for that grant right now. And it is first come, first served, so I would start it today.
I think you're wrong with Google Chrome. That's the one I don't recall the OASIS, because I had to switch to Internet Explorer.
No, this is for the grants.
But if Google Chrome does not work on the OASIS, I don't care.
Yeah, I guess, because that's a...
It, it was, it was Chrome that they recommended for grants.gov.
Yeah. It, it's the one that they want you for on the grant, to, your grant application.
So, if I just understood what you said correctly, and of course, this makes me nervous. You know, you act like it's just $5,000, get it, spend it, it's, there's no, you know, I mean, is that basically what you just said?
Yes, this is CARE spending, this is also CARES Act.
I know, but that is not what, that is not, and I've had multiple calls, as a matter of fact, thoroughly read through what the governor put out, it's restricted. I mean, he knows to the detail that he even says, you can't use this money to get reimbursed for something you've already been reimbursed for.
Right.
It's for loss.
Yeah.
It's that term for loss.
It's to recoup losses.
Yeah, but when you, I mean, to me, he even took it a step farther than what he put out, restricting what those monies can be used for. And, and the only thing, so, so we have some serious sensitivity in this county, because at the other end of the county, we've had some unfortunateness, gross misunderstanding of federal funding, and, and ultimately, some people that are on trial now, and, you know, because the very audits that they didn't think were coming, came. And so all I'm saying is, there's a lot of sensitivity in this county to what can this be used for, how's it have to be spent? And even today, before coming here, I've had questions on the governor's $5,000, and I went out and looked at it myself, and it, I mean, it basically, you know, it says, you've got to be able to prove you're going to use it for expenses that you haven't been reimbursed for, and it doesn't even really say that it, it's the revenue piece, that it can be used for loss of revenue.
So what are you, Mayor, what are you thinking that, that's laughing if you...
No, no, all I'm concerned about is, I, I think you've got to, you've got to, you've got to follow the guidelines. I mean, I don't think it is just $5,000, and, and, and I'm, you know, I'm just saying, I mean, I mean, I read through it, as a matter of fact, I may have mistaken what I read, but, but, I mean, I've already had calls on this from local businesses, and, and let me, let me just, I mean, real quick here, because I just worry about, you know, letting people think that, just go get it, it's out there, you're going to get it, and it probably will go that speed. I'm sure if you apply, they're going to, they're going to give you the money.
Well, I mean, part of it, part of going through that OASIS piece is to making sure that you have done everything that you are supposed to have done in order to be a business. You've got to make sure your taxes are current, et cetera, et cetera.
Exactly. But here is, right from the governor's side, cost of personal protection equipment required by business, payment of any short-term, less than 24 months, credit cards, debit incurred by the applicant to pay eligible expenses, expenses incurred to replenish inventory or other necessary reopening expenses. I mean, it really, you know, it really spells it out, and, and, you know, even, even me as a private business guy, when I look at this with the PPP, I've already been reimbursed for all this stuff, I mean, that, that additional, and so, so, you know...
But the PPP is for payroll.
Yeah, but, but also, there was, there was allowance on that that was additional to payroll.
For utilities.
But anyway, it just, it just, I mean, it really, you know, you can use it for utility payments, so on and so forth. I mean, it spells it out, but I don't know...
Well, I mean, I bet, I mean, I might be wrong in saying this, but if you've got a loss of this amount, and then you get this grant money, you get this grant money, as long as those add up to this loss, then, I mean, it's going to count for that. If you go over it, then what the heck are you doing?
Well, and I don't imagine, I imagine most of our going to be under. I, it's, I don't even think people are going to find the equivalent of their loss, unfortunately.
Right, but is that your way you look at it, is maybe it is small?
Yeah, I mean, what they're losing is working capital.
Yeah, it's, it's designed to recoup loss.
So there's a lot of stuff listed, I mean, you know, especially the restaurants and stuff, if you had to buy takeout stuff that you didn't have, the tables outside, there's a lot of stuff listed, but, I don't know, I guess I'm a guy that reads between the lines.
And, and you know, and Joe kind of touched on this a little bit, this is not for, going to get, be something that's going to go to, you know, a business who's not in good standing. It is going to go to businesses, because that two to five days it takes to be approved as a vendor, they're checking all of your records, your tax records, I mean, if you are not in good standing...
It's going through audits or something.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, that, there's, you know, they're checking everything, that two to five days it takes for you to become a vendor, is they're going through all of your stuff and checking everything. So it is, there is, you know, there is a system of checks and balances there, that that not just anybody can go out there and do that. I mean, it's got to be an established business. And you had to have already been in business by the end of February. Um, and you, I mean, you know, it can't be somebody who just jumped into business immediately.
And you've got to have at least one employee not counting yourself.
Yes. Right now, it's, um, it's set up so that, um, that one employee is not an owner, is not an owner.
As of right now?
That, that could change and it, it may change, but right now, it's, it's an, um, an employee that's a non-owner.
I have two questions. If you got the PPP loan, and we've got it and already spent it, uh, we've got a new one. Can you still get EIDL in that company? Because we have several companies that have no employees, but we have one that does all the payment. So we can only get it through the one with the payment, is that correct?
Uh-
EIDL.
No, EIDL you should be able to get for any of your companies.
If you have-
That experienced economic loss.
Okay. Now, number two question is, and you may not be able to answer this, nobody probably came yet. All of these agreements, okay, so are they counted as income, uh, in your business that you're in? Because you're going to take all that payroll like the PPP, you're going to take that as an expense. So if you don't claim it as income, aren't we kind of double-dipping?
That's a CPA question.
Oh, and you know-
No CPAs, but I would answer that. I'm not surprised.
What was your question?
Can you repeat that? If you get the PPP loan and you use it for payroll, well, your payroll's an expense. Do you have to count that grant as income to offset that expense? Or is that just a gift that, so you're kind of double-dipping if you don't count that as income and take your expense?
Why would you not count it as income?
It's a grant, it's a gift.
No, but that, there's a space on your, on your tax form for your accountant to put in if you got a grant. You're supposed to reconcile grants out. I have to. On my 990, it says, did you get enough, did you get this much in grants? Did you reconcile those out? My CPA reconciled that grant out.
And you know, I think, um, I believe when Brown Edwards did our P3 webinar, I think they touched on this a little bit. I'll have to get back and look at my notes, but I think that Brown Edwards did, um, touch on this and tell, I mean, because I think there was a very specific way they suggested that, uh, folks do it, but I'm not, I can't remember. That's, gosh, it's been a month now. Okay, yeah, I can send that out.
But I think you also have to be careful that, that, you know, you're not double-dipping even grants, you know? Taking this grant, climbing it, taking this grant, climbing it.
Well, and that comes back to these separate accounts. It's a great idea to, just like the P3, um, for, you know, any grant, anything, you have it in, and if it's not in a separate account, you know, at least, uh, you know, some sort of subfolder where you have this money and you directly associate each expenditure. These, and these are good things that if you have a great accountant, this is what they can help you do. Because, you know, you can't, I mean, that's just, you know, good business practice. You're not going to, you know, double-dip on, you know, your grants. So you know, with, say you have the P3 forgivable loan, which essentially becomes a grant, and then you do this $5,000 grant as well. You are wanting, you know, I would keep those separated, you know, my financial documentation of those completely separate so that I can, you know, account for, because you're going to account for, um, if your expenditures under each one. I mean, that's, I mean, that's just good business practice.
You as a business owner, when you get that money, like I do when some of my stuff, if I'm paying a bill, an appointment to that, and I keep it in one account, I'll take a copy of that bill and I attach it over here in this file, so I know I'm accounting that for that.
Exactly. Yeah, and then, and if you are ever audited for it, you already have that. I mean, and again, this is just good business practice.
And I think you all know this better than, than us and, you know, but, but the other thing I know too is, is, you know, a lot of these people that are asking these questions don't keep records. I mean, they don't, I mean, they just, they're, you know, that's just, I mean, they're business people, but they just don't, you know, and they don't, you know, they, they do the best they can, but they, you know, in a lot of cases, they don't even use accounts. Um, and they just don't keep records. And, um, so that's, you know, that's, that's what sometimes makes this real challenging.
They got to learn.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Maybe you could have some webinar, or some webinars, or maybe have some meetings where you help people develop those accounting principles that'll really help them if they don't have an accountant, so they at least understand how it should be done. Some sort of educational component for those folks.
Well, we do a little bit of that at 101, 102, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
But that, your purpose should be building up towards being able to have an accountant.
Yeah.
That's really, yeah. But these are one of, these things will happen, and this is how we will learn, so.
Yeah. Well, and that's something that we do talk about, you know, with our new clients. We always, um, we address, you know, what your strengths and your weaknesses are. Anybody who, you know, and even if they're in the ideation stage, we say, you know, is this something, you know, can you take a QuickBooks course online and do your own accounting? Is that something you're capable of doing, or is that something that you need to outsource? And we, we look at everybody's skill set and we help them and, because, you know, as a small business owner, you have to keep records, you, you have to keep those things. I mean, and that's, you know, if you apply for a grant, you do put that in its own folder and you do keep all the documentation of everything that was spent on. I mean, these are principles that we really work with our clients on. So, um, you know, that, that's something that we are, we're all about making sure folks know how to do that themselves. And if they don't, you know, that's something that we, you know, addresses their weakness and work with them to get an accountant for, because that's so important.
So real quick, so we don't hold you here all day. Um, so recently, NRG RDA, along with several other, other economic development type lenders across the state, was granted $750,000 through the governor's office and the Appalachian Regional Commission. So a bunch of us across the state, we do this type of lending, came together, and we came up with some terms about how we want to use this money, how we want to do this particular type of financing. Because, you know, P3 is good as it is and as beneficial as it is in keeping people working. It's the working capital piece, um, that people are missing as they, as we get further and further into this. So we were granted this loan program. We're still waiting on the money. So when the money gets here, we will have basically a one-page application on our website that you can go to and fill out, and that will come back to me and I will take it to my loan review committee. So for small, we targeted this specifically for small businesses because we felt that the mom and pops were being left out. But the terms on this money, if you, if you apply for $25,000, it will have a five-year term with it. You will have six months before you pay the first payment. And then the rate on that money, on those monies will be fixed at 3%. Again, there will be no collateral, there will be no personal guarantee required. If you need over $25,000, um, you can utilize this money too. Um, I will require collateral at that point. Um, but we're very flexible in terms of what we take, because the goal of this is to get the money out and get it out quickly. Um, so what will happen is, you do the application, it comes to me. I take it to my loan review committee, who meets virtually. And then my board of directors, which was a sits on, will be approving or ratifying those loans. Um, and then we'll just have probably a very simple closing that can be done electronically as well. So it should be a pretty smooth and efficient process. But this is for, for working capital. Um, all your taxes have to be current. Uh, we want three years' worth of financial statements. If you don't have the three years of financial statements, tax returns, et cetera, then we will take your most recent financial statements and go off of that. We're just, we've tried to make it as easy as possible. That is for under $25,000. So any questions about that?
That's the card, huh?
That is a loan.
And what's the interest rate on this?
It will be fixed at 3% for five-year period.
Where's that money coming from, Joe?
It's coming from the Appalachian Regional Commission.
So will that be, will that be a, a new established revolving loan fund?
No, actually, it's actually recapitalizing my existing loan fund, which has been depleted almost. So, but because we wanted this to be a COVID response, I ordinarily would have those types of terms, which are pretty good terms. Um, but because of the COVID situation, we were able to get those terms approved. So it should be a very efficient and quick process once we have the money. No prepayment penalties or anything like that, so.
So $25,000, five years?
Correct.
3%?
Yep, double-dipping. What else, Mayor?
Um, that covers everything I have.
Well, I hope this was helpful. Any other questions? Mayor, thank you for hosting us. Commissioner Neal, thank you to the Nicholas County Commission for your support of us and helping to make this happen. So, um, you'll have Mary's contact info, you'll have mine. Um, we're available, email, phone call, what have you.
And if you want to fill out your little sheets and just leave them on the table, I'll pick them up. That way, we're kind of trying to do least contact as possible. And if you want more information on anything we talked about, make a note on there and I will be happy to get that to you.